I will call the October 17th meeting to order. Will you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we got a bit of a crowd tonight, all right. Thank you all for coming out. As is customary with our meetings, we have a few things to take care of first here before we get into the items that are on the public hearing agenda. So start with, we have reports from commissioners and staff. Would you like to go first, staff?
I have no reports.
Well, that makes it easy. Any commissioners have reports that they would like to share?
We do not.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the report from the Board of Supervisors. Planning Committee Representative?
We have not had a meeting.
Agricultural Advisory Committee Representative?
He's not here.
That's Dick.
Dick, he's not here, okay. So we'll move on to the minutes of the meeting of October 3rd, 2018.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, so we will move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. We've got 15 minutes for anyone who would like to get up and speak to the commission about anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have an issue that you'd like to discuss or like us to know something about, this is your opportunity. Is there anyone who'd like to come up tonight and speak on something that's not on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the public hearing agenda. So item number one. So, conditional use permit 18-005. The applicant is Williams. Are you taking this, Natalie? Okay.
Hello, I'm Natalie Rizzi, and I am the project planner for conditional use permit CUP 18-005 and variance VAR 18-003. And the applicant is AT&amp;T Care of Epic Wireless. And here are the vision, mission, and values as adopted by Tuolumne County, which we utilize for projects we receive. Project description: Conditional use permit CUP 18-005 to allow the construction of a new 206-foot-tall lattice wireless communications tower and related equipment within a 35-by-35-foot fence compound in the southern portion of assessor's parcel number 27-010-18. And variance VAR 18-003 to allow the tower within the 110% setback of the tower height from property boundaries as required by Section 17.53.090 of the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code. The tower is 200 feet tall with a 6-foot lightning arrestor on top for a total height of 206 feet. Since the tower is 206 feet tall, the required 110% setback would be 226.6 feet from any property boundary. The tower is proposed to be constructed 121 feet from the southern property boundary. The project site is located on North Fork Road in the community of Long Barn, approximately 3,000 feet south of the intersection of Long Barn Road and North Fork Road. It is an 81.2-acre parcel zoned AE37, which is exclusive agricultural, 37-acre minimum, and the general plan designation is agricultural. The project also proposes an access road through APN 27-010-13, which is a 17-acre parcel zoned A10, which is general agricultural, 10-acre minimum, and has a general plan designation of rural residential. Here is a map of the project site and the surrounding parcels. Here is the design of the tower. Due to its height, which is necessary to receive signal from Mount Elizabeth, a lattice design is proposed in order to be structurally sound. There is space for up to three additional carriers. This also shows the security features, which includes a 6-foot-tall chain-link fence with three-strand anti-climb barriers surrounding the facility to discourage trespassing. Here are the visual simulations looking from Long Barn Road and North Fork Road. And here are the visual simulations looking from Highway 108. As the visual simulations show, vegetation blocks the views of the tower and facility. Section 17.53.120A5 of the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code states that "All major wireless communication towers shall be designed as stealth facilities or shall otherwise blend with the surrounding landscape unless evidence is submitted to and accepted by the decision-making body and a finding is made that locating it on a less visible site is infeasible." Although the proposed tower is not designed as a stealth tower, the project has been conditioned to require the tower and all support equipment to be painted earth tones to blend with the surrounding vegetation and environment. The project is also conditioned to require earth-tone-colored slats to be used in the chain-link fence surrounding the facility. Additionally, the visual simulations show that the tower is not visible from surrounding roadways. Therefore, the proposed tower will otherwise blend with the surrounding landscape as required by this section of code. Notices of the project were sent to 31 adjoining property owners on June 13th, 2018. The county received one response letter, which was in opposition to the proposed project. The letter raised concerns about decreased property values. Section 15064E of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, states that "Economic and social changes resulting from a project shall not be treated as significant effects on the environment. Decreased property values would be considered social or economic changes." Your decision process tonight: The Tuolumne County Planning Commission may either approve the project with the conditions, approve the project with modifications, deny the project, or send the project back to staff to work on. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff? I have one. Is the person that was opposed an adjacent neighbor or someone in the general area?
They are within 1,000 feet. I'm not sure where exactly within that.
I was just hoping they weren't the one where you're giving them the variance and it's the next parcel.
They're not. They're not an adjacent property owner.
That was the only reason for the question. Thank you.
I have one question. How many adjacent property owners are there to this parcel?
I believe there were 31 within 1,000 feet.
Because some people in their own multiple parcels, so it's a little hard to decipher how many owners we have.
All right. Seeing no more questions, I'll open the public hearing. The way we do this, we start with those in favor. You're not required to give us your name, but if you wish to, that's fine. Once the people in favor are done, we'll ask for anybody who's opposed. If anyone is neutral, they go third, and then the opportunity for those who were in favor to rebut anything from anyone that was opposed. And if we go that far, then we go one more step to those that were opposed, get to rebut anything they heard from those that were in favor. So starting with those in favor, you're up first.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Nick Taggus with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. Natalie, if you wouldn't mind, could you put the slide back up showing the parcels with the land use designations? That one, perfect. So, this is an AT&amp;T FirstNet and WLL project. This will provide upwards of 200 homes in the general area and small businesses, if there are in the area, with high-speed broadband internet. This is also a FirstNet tower for a dedicated network for our first responders. So when we first designed this project, it was well over a year ago, and we only needed about 100 to 120 feet to clear the trees, to provide internet. However, it was determined after we did a further design walk for fiber that there was no fiber readily available in the area, and that the nearest tower that had a line of sight was Mount Elizabeth. And in order to get that height, or to get that signal, the tower had to be 200 feet tall. And with that constraint, a tree design was well out of the realm of feasibility. So, we redesigned it with a lattice tower. We worked closely with our landlord. If you see on the screen, the location that we designed it intentionally was to be as far away from the other adjoining parcels as possible, and the neighbor that we're encroaching on is the United States Forest Service. So if I can walk away for a second.
We are right about, if you could correct me, Natalie, in this, either in this section or in this section of the parcel based on the survey?
So we intentionally, knowing the concerns of neighbors, we tried to get this thing as far away from any residential units as possible, which we feel we were successful in doing. Unfortunately, by doing that, we had to request a variance because of the height. We looked at pushing it further into the parcel, but if we were to do that and negating the need for a variance, we would have had drastic grading and a lot of tree removal. And so we really wanted to avoid as much impacts to the natural environment as possible. So, that is the history of the project, why we designed it the way we did, and the benefits that are going to be provided. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Are there any questions for the gentleman?
Yes, sir.
When would you do construction on this?
So, we are still in the environmental phase with the federal government, with NEPA, but we are on schedule to have, we already have a real estate agreement fully in place with the landlord. Once we get planning approval, we're a small company, so we will immediately start putting construction drawings together. Our goal is to deliver this to the AT&amp;T Civil Group, which is separate from our group that does real estate rights and government entitlements. This will be on the agenda of items with AT&amp;T's intergroup to be built either at the end of first quarter of next year or beginning of second quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other question. Why is NEPA involved?
So, the federal government is heavily involved with wireless carriers in every jurisdiction in the United States. So one of the first things that happens is after we submit an application to local jurisdictions, we provide a series of documents to a third-party group hired by AT&amp;T. They go through NEPA, SHIPO, THIPO, and I think there's another acronym that I'm not aware of. And they do a lot. And so, a lot of times what trips us up is if we design a power and telco and access route that later changes. If that wasn't first identified in the first round of NEPA, and then it changes, then that takes us back to square one again.
So this has nothing to do with the fact that you're adjacent to the forest?
No, nothing to do with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Learned something.
There you go.
Clear as mud.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll go on to those that might be opposed. Anyone like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Seeing none, anyone like to speak neutrally? Okay. Bring it back to the commission. Anyone have any thoughts?
We do. So this is my first District 3 cell tower since being on the commission.
Congratulations.
I actually have visited this site several times in the last week on different days just to try and get a feel for it, because this is an area that we recreate on quite often out behind Long Barn, and a lot of visitors use it. And I think it's actually a very well-proposed location. I think they've done an excellent job with this, and I think it's a really welcome addition to infrastructure, especially in Long Barn. One of the things he didn't mention is the necessary small school in Long Barn that does not have internet access, and it's posing some issues with their state assessment testing. So I know this opens a door for them that's been closed for quite a while, and it's kind of a hurdle. So, for me, I think it's a very welcome addition to Upper 108, and I'm pleased to see it happening.
I think everyone living in Long Barn or in that general area is also going to welcome this cell tower.
Yes.
Anyone else? I couldn't help but hear also that it was the FirstNet, so your first providers, which of course we're all very interested in making sure they can be there as efficiently as possible, so. Entertain a motion if somebody's ready.
Go ahead.
Ladies first.
Go ahead, there's a lot of conditions on that.
Well, I'm not going to list them all. I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit CUP 18-005 with the variance 18-003 based on conditions 1 through 37.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Congratulations, good project.
Do we get the variance?
He included that in his motion.
If there you should say through F. Fine, it's A through F. That's good.
Yeah, you probably should have, A through F and A through F. But, oh well. We knew what he meant.
Okay.
So the second project. Switch players at the staff table.
Hi, my name is Kim Belachi. I'm a planner at the Community Resources Agency, and my project tonight is a rezone, RZ 18009, and variance 18006 from the beginning. Here again are the vision, mission, and value statement we hold ourselves to for all our projects at the Community Resources Agency. The project site is three acres located on the east side of Kewan Mill Road. The applicant is requesting to relocate just under one-half acre of open space and allow the proposed single-family residence inside the 150-foot building setback. Ordinance for zone change 18009 is to allow an exchange of approximately 21,513 square feet of open space zoning with the residential estate 3-acre minimum zoning. The map is showing, this map is showing the proposed zoning exchange. Variance 18006 is to allow the proposed single-family residence with attached garage inside the front 150-foot building setback to 30 feet from the front boundary. Here is the map showing the 150-foot building setback line and location of the proposed structure. The highlighted yellow that's coming up gives you an idea of where the structure would be in the 150-foot. On the left side is the map of the project site on Kewan Mill Road. Some of the findings for the zone change 18009 are consistent with the general plan and are in accordance with the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code. Findings for variance 18006, granting the variance does not constitute a granting of special privilege, an activity that is not already enjoyed by others and is not detrimental to the health and safety of persons in the area. The discussion process for the Planning Commission for Zone Change 18009 tonight is to recommend approval of the project, recommend approval with conditions, recommend denial of the project, or send the project back to staff. Decision for variance 18006 for the Planning Commission may approve the project, approve the project with conditions, deny the project, or send the project back to staff.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff from any of the commissioners?
Any questions? Peter?
Get that map back up if you need.
Yeah, Cole, go ahead.
Usually in the presentation, you acknowledge or respond to the letter. Do we have any response to the letter and the fact that we've never, while I've been on the board, have ever made a recommendation on this street? And they're recommending that we've denied some. Is that something we've done in the past, or?
I'm not aware of any other variances that have gone through, but obviously there could be others that predate my time at the county. We did receive one letter, correct?
Yeah.
And the response to that, do you want to summarize that? I think it was in the staff report.
Yes, we had a letter questioning why the 150-foot building setback was on this property and along the Kewan Mill. And after research, we found that there is a ditch on the other side of the roadway. And before this Comstock Ranch was approved for the subdivision, they, building this Kewan Mill Road intercepted some possible cultural resources possible and the drainage ditch. And so they extended the open space due to the road going in for the, before the approval of Comstock Ranch.
If I understand the concern of the person writing the letter, there's 150-foot setback all along Kewan Mill on that side, is correct?
It is for a distance. I'm not sure of the entire distance.
It's along the Comstock Ranch area, so it extends north and south of this project site.
Through the original Comstock Ranch project.
That's correct.
So the others would wonder if they could get the same, perhaps.
That's right. And the purpose of a variance is really a site-specific analysis to look if there's unique constraints on a project site that would necessitate or would, that would create undue hardship on a property owner. And this is a situation where, due to the slope of the project site, the location of the driveway easement basically over top of an existing drainage, the staff believes that it would create an undue hardship on this property, due to the amount of grading that would need to go in for a driveway, the improvements that would need to be done to deal with the drainage that's no longer going in the ditch because we're going to put a culvert through it, as well as potential off-site drainage issues on the Kewan Mill Road. So that's why a variance is being recommended for approval, given the site constraints at this particular property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff before we go to the applicant? All right, that will open the public hearing. As before, those who in favor get to go first. Anyone like to speak in favor of the project?
My name is Michael Keggy, and I represent BK Real Estate. I just wanted to build a simple home for myself, my family. I'm trying to downsize. I went to the planning department, I pulled a road encroachment permit and a septic permit, and cut a driveway in. And somebody suggested I go down to the county and make sure what I'm doing is going to work. There's a 30% grade. I had the privilege of bringing Mr. Gonzalez up, and he said, "Mike, this is way too steep. There's no way you're going to get a house built up here," you know, because of fire. And I said, "Well, I got my car up here, I'm building," and he said, "Yeah, but it's fire. There's no way." And I said, "Well, I didn't set the 150-foot setback," and he said, "I understand that, but we'd like to work with you. It's just too steep. Why don't you request a variance where you exchange some of the 150-foot setback with some that's in the front?" And at that time, I thought it was for the animals, you know, to travel up and down. And I know they don't read signs, they'll go wherever they can. So, working with the planning, that's what I had worked out, that if I could get down within 30 feet off of Kewan Mill Road, which is, I think, that's what an average is if it's an acre or more, that I could get a small house, which is 1,600 square foot a minimum they have for a Comstock Ranch, that that would be adequate and let me go on with my project. Otherwise, I don't think I can do anything. I'm just kind of stuck. I've been working on this thing for years, trying to get something figured out. I talked to Mr. York, and he suggested I go up to the top of the property and see if I can come in. I did that, brought a guy out with a dozer, and he threw his hands up after a day of work and said, "Now I've run into a rock outcropping." And he said, "You're probably looking at $50,000 to dynamite." And I said, "I can't do that." And he said, "I understand." I said, "What do I owe you?" And he goes, "Hey, you don't owe me anything. This is the first job I've ever seen. I could put a driveway in, and I can't." So he left. Lloyd Edwards paid dirt anyway. So here I am, at your mercy, trying to see if I can get a permit where I can build, exchange that approximately half acre off of a 3-acre parcel to put in a home for my wife and myself. That's what I have, thank you.
Any questions for the gentleman? Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Okay, we'll move on to those opposed. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the project? Seeing none, any neutral? Then we'll bring it back to the commission. So, I guess my, I don't mean to belabor the previous point, but there was something before Comstock Ranch was built having to do with the ditch and the reason for the original setback. Would that still apply?
That's what the variance is basically asking for, is an exception to that standard. And so...
I understand that part. I'm just wondering, you know, there was an original reason why that was put there.
Right.
Does that reason still exist? Would it otherwise still be the policy to have that big a setback?
On a new, on a new project?
Yeah.
It's difficult to answer that. It would really, I mean, it depends on what the resource was, what the drainage issues were. At the time, the solution was 150-foot setback from Kewan Mill Road. I would also infer that that would also be a visual quality buffer that along Kewan Mill Road as well. I've been out to the project site along with many of our staff, both in and out of the planning division, to look at this, to try to bring a proposal for a solution to your commission tonight. The site, as we discussed, the slopes are so significant that the level that the house will be constructed at is significantly higher than the roadway. We've been working with the applicant to maintain screened vegetation between the new proposed house and Kewan Mill Road. I've driven up and down Kewan Mill Road with our staff, trying to see where we would see this house from if we were driving the speed limit down up and down Kewan Mill Road, and it has very limited visibility. And so, that is why staff is recommending approval of the variance based on the site constraints. Cost aside, it's really the undue hardship on this property, given where the driveway easement is located on top of a drainage easement, it's just really infeasible to put the driveway where the original map intended for it to go.
Okay. Go ahead, Cole.
I'll make a recommendation of approval for Zone Change RZ 18-009 based on A through D, and approval of variance 18-006 based on A through F and subject to conditions 1 through 7.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, right, just before we go into the next item, I just wanted to remind you that if you're interested in putting a time limit on any public comments, you need to do it for both sides so that everyone has a fair amount of time to make comments at the podium tonight.
Thank you. Can I get a show of hands of how many people intend to speak, either for or against, on the next project? All right, I think we'll probably have to put a time limit on it. Do you have the magic controller here? You're going to go the old-school way, okay.
Three minutes.
So now you're going to make me, all right. All right, so we're going to ask that everyone keep their comments within three minutes. That way, we are not here until 11 o'clock tonight, and everyone should get their opportunity to speak. It doesn't mean it couldn't be a little bit longer if one of us has a question, but we'd like you to keep it within three minutes, please. So with that, we'll go to the staff presentation.
Good evening. My name is Renee Hendry. I'm the project planner. The Community Resources Agency received an application on June 22nd, 2018, for a site development permit ST- development permit, STP 18-001, to construct a Wendy's restaurant. Here are the vision, mission, and value statements adopted by Topeka County, which are utilized as a guide for processing of each project application that we receive. The purpose of the project is to construct a 2,568-square-foot commercial building in addition of a Wendy's fast-food restaurant, which is a permitted use in the existing C1 zoning district. However, the county ordinance code requires a site development permit be obtained for commercial projects. The project site is located on the northeast corner of Fur Drive and Mono Way in East Sonora. A McDonald's restaurant is across Mono Way from the project site. The property is designated general commercial by the Topeka County General Plan. The site has had several projects proposed in the past that have never materialized. This has been the only project that has received an application requesting an entitlement. The purpose of a site development permit is to ensure that certain types of proposed developments will serve to achieve a design which is desirable. Therefore, your commission must review this project for performance to the latest accepted planning and engineering standards, which include the site layout, the structure design, landscaping, access, traffic circulation, and parking. Here is the location of the project at the intersection of Fur Drive and Mono Way. The red color designate commercial properties. The yellow color designates residential properties. The pink color is public property, and the gray color allows for mixed uses. Here is the site plan for the project. There will be a right-turn-in, right-turn-out driveway on Mono Way. A second driveway would be placed on the eastern portion of Fur Drive to allow customers the ability to utilize the traffic light at Mono Way intersection to turn either left or right on Mono Way. The project site is subject to the East Sonora Design Guidelines. Here is the original design of the building. The roof line was basically flat with very little elements of the design guidelines incorporated into the design. The Community Resources Agency requested the applicant to add more elements to the design of the building. Here are the revised elevations for the proposed building. The applicant, the applicant has incorporated several design elements from the East Sonora Design Guidelines, such as pitched roofs, mullion windows, which are little panes of glass, awnings, vertical and horizontal siding, and even rock trim. The revisions appear to be consistent with the East Sonora Design Guidelines. Landscaping will be utilized in the interior of the development and along the Mono Way and Fur Drive frontages. The proposed landscape plan is consistent with the East Sonora Design Guidelines' recommendation for landscaping, and also consistent with the Topeka County Landscape Guidelines. Persistent, pursuant to the ordinance code, the minimum area to be landscaped is 10% of the project site. For the 1.2-acre site, an area of 5,663 square feet is required to be landscaped. Mature native vegetation in the northern portion of the site will be retained as a visual buffer between the residences on Fur Drive and the restaurant building. One of the neighbors' concern is traffic impacting Fur Drive. This area of Mono Way currently has approximately 25,300 daily vehicle trips. The restaurant is expected to generate 413 daily vehicle trips, which would be staggered throughout the day. The majority of the traffic is expected to enter the main Mono Way driveway. Fur Drive, driveway can be used as well. Fur Drive is a public road which allows use by all members of the public. Another neighbor's concern was noise from the site. Trash, traffic passing by the project site on Mono Way generates an approximate 70 decibels of sound. The restaurant's drive-through window is adjacent to Mono Way away from the residences to the north. The vegetation buffer should also reduce any sound that may come from the restaurant facility. The sound of voices, which typically range from 50 to 60 decibels, should be overlaid by the sound of the passing traffic. The neighbors were also concerned about trash migrating off-site. The property owner has stated that their restaurant employees conduct trash inspections of the property hourly to ensure the facility presents a clean and attractive appearance to the customers. Odors were another concern from the facility. The restaurant uses, uses a high-efficiency filter over the cooking hoods, which basically traps 97% of the smoke and odors that come during, out during the cooking process. The filters are cleaned on a regular basis to ensure a clean and safe restaurant operation. The Planning Commission needs to make findings for the project, which include determining if the project is consistent with the Topeka County General Plan, the ordinance code, that the project will not overburden municipal facilities, that the size and the terrain of the site are suitable for the proposed use, and that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. The Planning Commission may either approve the project, approve the project with modifications, deny the project, or send the project back to staff for any corrections. Any questions?
Thea.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Can you go back to the, the picture of the facility? So just so that I have my orientation right, the side with the driveway is facing Mono, and then the side that doesn't have the drive-through window is facing back towards the backside of Fur, where the residential area is?
So the one that's on the top is the backside. The one in the middle is the frontage along Mono that has the drive-through window and the...
Right.
And then these are the sides.
And the Wendy's is facing towards the highway, Highway 108?
It's, the Wendy's is facing towards Mono Way.
Towards the city.
Okay.
Towards the city side of Mono Way.
All right. Anybody else have any questions, the staff, before we ask anybody to come up? At the risk of maybe wishing I didn't, Duke?
Then don't do it.
With a preference like that, how can I lose?
We go back a long way, sir.
Yes, we do.
Would you give us your summary on the traffic? I think we both have a history of looking at this project back a different time, or a project similar to this, at least.
Yeah, this property, which was originally purchased as excess land by Caltrans in conjunction with the East Sonora Bypass. It was acquired by Caltrans. They sliced off a piece for widening of the Mono Way area. It was formerly known as the site of the Mallards Nursery. And the Caltrans project, the East Sonora Bypass, cut off Fur Drive as we know it today, and they built a new Fur Drive, which is the signal to the west of this site. The key element to that site, when we, there was an auction on the steps of, right here on the steps of this building, and the buyer came in within 10 minutes of purchasing the property, or winning the bid, and walked up to the counter, announced he just acquired the property. And I told him, "Well, congratulations." And he asked immediately about getting access into the site, and I told him on the spot that it would be limited to right-in, right-out only at that time. I don't remember how many years ago, but it was a few.
May 2008.
Yeah. So, he questioned it. You happened to be walking through the lobby and brought you over, pointed up the site, the situation. You looked at it and you go, "Yep, right-in, right-out." That's how that property originally came about. And we, over the years, as they say, we've been monitoring this, had a lot of people interested in it over the years for different purposes, but this is the only one that's actually come to the Planning Commission.
And the 413 trips is, I'm sure, out of the, the standard count, the standard way that those are counted by ICE?
Yeah. ITE, we use that, and, which was, puts it just under the threshold for what we would consider requiring a traffic impact, traffic impact study. And that area, because of all the other applications that have come in, in and around that area, there have been traffic studies for the Walmart expansion, the Lowe's, Law and Justice Center, and the McDonald's, all triggered traffic studies in this immediate area. So you might say it's been studied to death, and...
Was Caltrans asked their opinion at all?
You never know with Caltrans, but they responded on the project and they had no comments.
Thank you.
And, and I might add that the commercial driveway that you see out there today was built by Caltrans after the Mono Way, one of, one of the East Sonora Bypass projects.
Yeah, Quincy.
Unless anyone has further questions. Commissioner, you did bring up the fact that you're familiar with the project site. Since you didn't disclose a financial conflict of interest, I just was wondering if you could discuss that, under the general, under a general rule, conflict of interest that you feel, even though you have knowledge of the site, you can act independently, making a decision tonight, just for the benefit of the public, since they might not know your history?
I believe I can. I mean, that was 10 years ago, it was a different project. It was just a reaction to a question.
Perfect thing. I just wanted clarification for the audience. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay, with that, anybody else? I figured we'd get that issue out of the way, because that's the one I suspect is going to be the most troubling. Anyone in favor, like to come up and start the process of the, of the, remember, it's going to be three minutes, so Quincy's phone will be the official timekeeper.
I'll be short. Thank you, Planning Commission, and thank you, planners, for recommending approval on this project. My name is Joe Holt, I'm with Holt Construction. I'll speak on the construction phase of the project real quick. We're the general contractor building and overseeing all construction on the project. We work closely with the owners in the pre-construction phase to develop the property and project. I wanted to touch briefly on the construction phase before handing over to the, to one of the owners, Josh, to discuss a bit about operations. So, construction can, construction can be untidy and dangerous if not performed correctly. At Holt, we hold our employees, subcontractors, and vendors to a high standard during the construction phase of the project. Safety worker, safety of our workers and the public are number-one priority. We keep all construction fenced into the site as much as possible, and will provide barriers and traffic control when it cannot. We have weekly safety meetings, along with daily inspections of the site, to mitigate any safety issues during construction. Cleanliness of the job site is another top priority, where we, again, hold our employees and vendors responsible to make sure we have a clean and tidy job site. Daily and weekly cleanups will be completed to keep construction debris held within the construction site. Construction can be dusty as well, and we're committed to keeping our dust on-site and dust control, with dust control measures. Now hand it over to Josh from East Bay, to discuss a little bit about the operations of the restaurant.
Good evening. My name is Josh, and I am with the Wendy's Restaurant. I do know that the Wendy's sign is out in front of the building, but we are truly a small business. Family and I own and operate 18 Wendy's restaurants throughout Northern California, and we pride ourselves in being in the community, helping out with schools and local sports teams at all, at all possible. And we're in the restaurants every single day. We like to be in there with the crew, our management, our teams, make sure they're, they're treated fairly, make sure we have a good place for, for the public to come and, and have excellent food at a, at a fair price. So I just wanted to kind of give a brief introduction of us as a, as a company, and we look forward to being here. So, thank you, if you have any questions.
May I ask some other cities you're in?
So, mostly towards Bay Area, Dublin, Brentwood, San Ramon, that, that area, East Bay.
I think that's it, unless anyone else has a, oops. I think that's it, unless anyone else has a question. Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Okay, we'll go to those that are opposed, who would like to go first.
Come on up.
Somebody's got to come up.
I'll try to keep it short. Three minutes is pretty tight. My name's Joe Lafayette. I live directly across from where they're proposing this project. I'm not opposed to Wendy's. I think Wendy's is great. I also like Metallica, but I don't put it at my kitchen dinner table. So there's a time and a place for everything, and I don't need a Wendy's right in my front yard. I don't think anybody at this table that I'm talking to wants it in their front yard either. Immediately, my property value is going to decrease. Whether you think that's an issue or not, it's a big issue for me, because I'm not a renter, I'm a homeowner. And I didn't just buy the lot I'm on, I bought the lot adjacent to where I'm at, which is in between myself and Wendy's. So I own the property that's bordered by three streets, and they're all looking right at where this Wendy's is supposed to be. I don't want the McDonald's across the street from where I'm at, but I can't change that. I was going on fires when that was happening, and it all got approved, and it's going on now. And now I'm getting ringed by another one, where a residential area, we're not a, it might be zoned commercial right where I live, but it's for future planning. That doesn't negate the fact that we're a residential street, and a dead-end street with nothing but houses, and a history of nothing but that, and a flower shop. And now we're trying to turn it into something else, and it is the gateway to Sonora. And you're the gateway to deciding what is the gateway to Sonora. Let's get back to noise. Traffic, yeah, there's traffic noise that's constant, but it's like the ocean, because it's going by and it's just cars in the wind. That's not the same as a business that's right there with people honking their horns, ordering supersized whatever, screaming into the loudspeaker, getting in fights with their significant others out in the parking lot. That's the kind of noise I don't want that's in my bedroom window that I'm looking at and listening to. That's what's deterring my property value and my quality of life. I'm not talking about cars coming in and out. Parking lot noise, traffic noise, drive-through noise from the speaker coming back as well. And then, here's the noise you're not thinking about, it's the trash trucks. And I'm the one who knows about that, because I hear them from McDonald's at 5:00 every morning, so, or whenever they come by, and twice a day. So now I'm going to hear it there and across the street as well, so it's all around me. I got these big trucks banging these things. It sounds like a vehicle's having a traffic accident every time they dump one of these dumpsters. And now we're talking about doubling the noise I'm already dealing with. Parking, how about employee parking? Where are they going to go? Are they going to be out on the streets? There's no off-street parking. Are they going to be looking for spots in my driveway and adjacent to all of our lots and getting up and around? I don't see exact employee parking, or an ordinance, or any restriction that says our employees will be restricted exactly to the site and not allowed anywhere else.
Okay, sir, you, you have used three minutes. Can you wrap it up?
Excuse me, can I yield my three minutes?
No.
No.
All right, I'll go to...
In fairness to everyone, we're trying to limit it so that everyone gets an equal opportunity.
I'm only about 20% through what I want to talk about. So if this goes to another level, you guys are going to have multiple meetings on this and another chance to speak, or what?
As this is a site development permit, site development permits can be approved by a number of different entities. The first one is at a staff level by the Community Resources Agency Director. Given the sensitivity of this project, that was not chosen or recommended, and so the project is coming before the Planning Commission tonight for a final approval. Should the Planning Commission approve or deny the project, the project then can be appealed with the applicable fee to the Board of Supervisors for an additional hearing on the project.
That's what I wanted you to hear.
Okay. If I could just say one more thing on my way out.
Please, keep it going.
And this is it. You're allowing an access up Fur Drive instead of just off of Mono Way, not talking about a turn lane or anything. Fur Drive is the access to the entire neighborhood. You're putting access up into a residential neighborhood for a commercial establishment.
Okay, we understand. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition, please? Make your way up. You can line up if you like, however you want to do it.
My name is Anne Milberg, and I live on Fur Drive, and I used to work for the county, for the planning group. I used to do the maps, and now I'm retired. And I'm speaking for me and my husband. I want to know, what are going to be your hours of operation? Can they answer this?
You have to ask us, and then we can...
Do you know the hours of operation? And do you know about when truck deliveries will be made and how often? Because none of this information has been in the agenda report, and I believe they are very impactful depending on the times that they choose to open and close.
We will ask those questions. Please continue.
Okay. All right. I'm going to talk about access. Millard's Nursery operated for 37 years at the site of the proposed Wendy's. When the Easternora Bypass reconfigured Business 108, it no longer allowed good or safe access to Millard's. Ed Wright, Millard's owner, made a complaint about the impact to his business and was ultimately bought out by Caltrans, and then his buildings were razed. To check my recollection of these events, I talked to two former planners, and they confirmed my information was accurate. If the road access wasn't viable for Millard's, then what has changed now? And I say, nothing. Nothing has changed. Since there's no possible access for the proposed Wendy's Restaurant for motorists traveling eastbound on Business 108, the county's Band-Aid solution is to use Fur Drive, a local rural roadway, into a residential subdivision for restaurant access. The steep ramp up Fur Drive from the Sanguinetti Loop intersection of Business 108 is unsafe during snowfall and in freezing weather following a rainstorm. Also, the intersection has been the scene of many traffic accidents, including one that was very serious. Red light running is such a frequent occurrence that we warn people to make sure all cross traffic is stopped before entering or crossing Business 108. Any Wendy's patron wishing to continue eastbound on Business 108 will have to retrace their steps down Fur Drive ramp to enter Business 108. This would only exacerbate the congestion in and around this intersection and increase the risk of accidents. Often, the traffic is backed up when you want to turn left to go east, and you can't even get on, can't even turn left because it's backed up from the light. Going the other direction, very often, the traffic is backed up past the off-ramp for, the exit for the off-ramp there. Okay. Now, the county used the figure of 413 vehicle trips daily or 50 vehicle trips per hour for the proposed Wendy's to avoid a trip. Basically, you didn't have to do a traffic study. We questioned the math a little and the data used to determine this vehicle traffic level, and then my husband went to McDonald's Restaurant, which is kitty-corner to the proposed Wendy's location. The manager volunteered they have 1,000 daily vehicle trips and 100 vehicle trips during the lunch hour.
Ma'am, we are at three minutes.
Really?
Yep.
Because there's a lot of things that are happening here. It's not safe. The school bus goes up Fur Drive...
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. I'm going to wrap it up then. Okay, I want to know why Duke, you're telling people this is a done deal before the public hearing. I got it from people in my neighborhood. We've been talking to them.
Ma'am, you really have to wrap it up, please.
Okay. In this case, Tuolumne County's put the interest of an out-of-town investor ahead of the potential safety and welfare of its residents. Instead of urging these investors to locate their fast food chain available in vacant restaurants, the county seemed determined to push through.
Ma'am, really, it's, it's time now. You've had your three minutes.
Okay. Well, I urge you to deny this.
Thank you.
Because we are a residential neighborhood. I don't care whether you want to say it's a public road. It's still over the whole area. Should have notified everybody.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Hi, thank you. My name's Dimitri Postelou. I live in the affected area and am further impacted by the proposed development of Wendy's. I lived in this neighborhood for 25 years. I'd like to address the Planning Commission regarding the unsafe conditions that exist in the Mountain View Drive and Fur Stop Sign and the Fur Drive Mono Way Stop Light. As you approach a stoplight on Mountain View Drive and Fur Drive, there is no visibility to upcoming traffic on Fur Drive. The steep grade of Fur Drive does not allow the visibility of cars coming up the road. This makes it unsafe to make your turn to progress to the stoplight. As you travel down the steep grade to the stoplight at Fur Drive and Mono Way, you're impacted by the congestion on Mono Way of eight ways of access roads at this intersection, all within less than one-eighth of a mile. It is congested and dangerous. When Fur Drive was reconfigured due to the bypass development to create an easy access on and off Mono Way, this futile attempt created the steep grade that is unsafe. Fur Drive has no left-hand turn lane to make a turn onto Mono Way at the stoplight. When we make a left-hand turn, we're impacted by the traffic at the intersection and often remain in the intersection until the light turns red. There is inclement, inclement adverse weather, and oftentimes, when it is cold, icy, or snowing, motorists will slide down the steep grade onto Mono Way. Most importantly, we have parents walking their children to the bus stop in this area and neighborhood. The increase in traffic for families on these ill-managed roads would be dangerous, excuse me, and unsafe. We have no streetlights, no sidewalks in this area, and none of the roads are maintained. 15 years ago, Caltrans removed Millard's Nursery, a private business, from the proposed Wendy's site on Mono Way, using our state tax dollars to close the business because it was deemed unsafe to access Mono Way anymore. Now, why, when traffic has increased substantially in this area because of the bypass, and it is impacted and congested, would you think this would be safe for a fast food chain, for Wendy's to open business? Before committing to agreeing to this backwards thinking, please, because of potential revenue increases, look at the options to put Wendy's further up Mono Way, away from a neighborhood in unsafe road conditions and impacted roads. There are other options. She mentioned, we, we received national attention with the show Three Wishes. That, that show, those injuries occurred in that intersection. We're, we're impacted with garbage. We're, you, if you're going to allow fast food chains to come in here, you also need to allow them, or mandate them, to start adopting a highway, start adopting an area.
That is, you're, you're up to three minutes. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name's Alan Shelton, and I would like to fill in a couple blanks. Millard's has sat empty, the lot for Millard's has sat empty for years because of the access problems, and using Fur Drive as a solution is no solution at all. If he bought the property in 2008, McDonald's has sat empty up at the Junction Shopping Center. The Denny's has sat empty, and KFC has announced they're going to move, so that building's available. Those sites are away from residential areas, have good access, and there's a safety factor. School kids board the bus at the corner of Fur Drive and the retired Fur Drive. The bus has to perform a three-point turn to load those kids, and cars in the breakfast rush to use Fur Drive to get down to the Wendy's are going to go past those children, and that's a real concern. We have empty buildings. There's a solution to this, and building on a bad site is no solution at all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Harry Critchfield, and my wife is Mary Ann. She's here with me. I have a couple of, two letters here addressed to Ms. Hendry and also to Sherri Brennan. So here's two copies for...
Just hand them, staff. Thank you.
Okay, my wife and I, we reside at 13043 Fur Drive, Sonora, California, which is directly across the street from the proposed site. That road is, if I'm not mistaken, is part of my easement that created that road because the property's there. Anyway, we have lived there over three years, and for two of those three years, we were finally able to split our property. There's a vacant lot right next to our home. We've been able to split the property at a cost of approximately $20,000. We brought sewer and water to the, the place so we could have an address and sell the lot. Okay? And we're worried that that value might have gone down the tubes. If the county allows these to be built at this location, our property value on both of our lots may decrease. We have several other issues with this proposal. Removal of any of the trees would greatly increase the noise level of Mono Way. Making Fur Drive the main entry and exit would greatly increase our traffic on our road that I drive in and out of every day, right onto Fur Drive. Building any type of restaurant will increase the smells to the environment. It'll increase the noise at night and fighting and looting and screeching of cars, et cetera, et cetera. If there should be a fire at any type of restaurant at this location, the residents of Mountview Estates will have no outlet. Hear me when I say that. There's no access out the other way through the estates. There are several elderly families in this area who would not be able to escape. Please consider our concerns and do not allow a restaurant to be built at this location. I'm a little concerned that this is the final meeting on this proposal. I mean, this is the first that we've been notified of this thing. We got a letter of this meeting a couple of weeks ago. There are several areas which the gentleman just stated previous to me in Tuolumne County where Wendy's could be placed without interfering with the residents, the local residents, and their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Steve Case. My address is 12980 Mountain View Road. I actually live right across the street from Joel. Joel is my buffer between myself and McDonald's, and everything that Joel is saying about the drive-through, even though I got him between myself, the highway, and McDonald's, I still hear every night, you know, people ordering a Big Mac, screaming, yelling, anything else that goes on down at the McDonald's. The other thing that I want to bring up is that when McDonald's was passed, it was never discussed about parking. So, we have parking all along Mono Way that are all McDonald resident, or employees that are parking up on Mono Way. So they don't, they don't even let them park in the designated parking zone. Again, just like everybody else here has said, I can't believe that you would even think about putting a Wendy's at this location. The amount of accidents that happens at this intersection is just beyond me. I'm usually on the other end, so I'm usually the one fighting for a project. But this is insane. To think that we're going to let people come into that intersection and increase the amount of traffic that we already have, especially during the weather, is just absolutely insane. And you are budding up a restaurant that I, I can't even think of another location where you're budding up a restaurant right to a residential subdivision. And I, I just strongly suggest that they look somewhere else. This is a, and again, I'm not against doing something with that property, but that property is suited for something from eight to five with minimum traffic, a real estate office, something of that nature, not something that is, from what I understand, most Wendy's close at one o'clock in the morning. I, I do not even understand how Joel deals with it. In the summer evenings, when my windows are open, I hear it all night long. To think that we're going to have one kitty-corner to both of our properties is, is insane. So, I yield my time, but again, this is not the right site for, for this type of business. This is a site for a business that is from eight to five, that has minimum traffic, you know. The other thing is, turning into the site, the backup into coming off the highway, I don't even know how traffic mitigation has been bypassed. I do not believe those numbers.
You're, you're at your three minutes, sir. Could you please wrap it up?
Yep.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name's Mark Mills. I live at 13033 Fur Drive. I'm on the other side of Mary Ann and, and Harry there. And my concerns are with traffic noise, like everybody else said. I invite you guys to come out and walk from the bottom of the light, walk up Fur Drive and see how steep that is. I'll, you know, a lot of people can't do it. Come walk it, and then walk along Fur Drive because it curves to this other entrance you want to go to. It curves, and it goes up and down like this. Cars coming and, and from, from down the hill, a lot of times, go a little bit too fast, and they swerve into the other lane because of the way that's banked and the way that the road turns at the same time. So, that's, that's one of my major concerns. Another concern of mine is, is the giant puddle on Mono Way in the wintertime. And I think this, this project is another way to fix somebody else's screw-up. No, it's a bunch of crap. I strongly oppose this project. I'll be here at every meeting. Don't do it. Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak neutrally? Not really expecting any. Then the next opportunity would be for rebuttal. So the two folks that spoke in favor have an opportunity to come up, should you wish, to rebut anything that the opponents have said. You're not obligated to. It's optional. Since you've chosen not to, he's shaking his head, that means there'd be no, sir rebuttal. So that will close the hearing.
You guys didn't answer the question about...
Hold on, we're not there yet.
We're not there. We'll get there.
All right. Bring it back to the commission. Anybody wish to go first?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like the developer to come up, the business owner. And, and while he's taking his time getting up here, just be advised if you, however this goes, if it, it can be protested to the main board, and then the board, you get another chance, another vote. Just to repeat that, guy, somebody said this was the last vote, and it's not. So you heard some of the, the questions and concerns. So my first thing, let's, what's your hours of operation planning to be?
We open at 10:00 a.m. and plan to close at 1:00 a.m.
How did you select this site? Why didn't you take some of those other buildings?
This, this was, the developers approached us with this site. We felt like it was a, a good site to develop, and we think it's the best, best spot to develop a Wendy's along Mono Way.
Garbage collection times. When do you expect the garbage collection times to occur?
It varies on city. If we have any pull, we can get those, you know, pulled to where they're during the day, you know, closest to opening as possible. But we are sort of at the mercy of, of the garbage collection companies. So, if we have any help there, we'd be gladly to push that towards later in the day.
Those are my questions.
Anyone else?
Deliveries.
Go ahead.
What time of day do you anticipate deliveries, and how many?
So we typically get two to three deliveries per week, and we do have some control over delivery times, so we can make those, I mean, be before opening 10:00 a.m., but we can make those at, you know, eight or nine a.m. with our delivery company.
While we're on that thought... While we're on that thought, has the parking lot been laid out such that a larger truck, because I'm assuming if you're only having two or three deliveries a week, that it's going to be the larger, you know, box truck?
Yeah, yeah, the traffic circulation.
Can that make it around without having to go back up Fur Drive? Because it's got to go up Fur to get out, if I understand correctly.
I believe that.
And back through the neighborhood and back down to the stoplight.
I believe that is correct.
Okay.[627.82][627.82](laughter) I'm just asking if that's possible. I mean, excuse us. This is now in the hands of the commission. With all due respect, you've had your chance. Now, it's time for us to be able to ask our questions. Please give everyone the proper courtesy. My question is really for, you know, Duke, has that been checked? I mean, it's a fairly sharp turn. I'm wondering if the truck template allows that to happen and that's been checked.
When we looked at the site, we look at it both by myself and by the fire department for access for the fire trucks. And they can make it through there, the truck delivery. I'm looking at the site plan, which the location where the materials come into the site, could you identify that on the site plan?
We need to get back to that one.
One more.
One more.
Oops.
There you go.
Okay. So, typically, we have a back door. That's where the material will come in.
But will they come off Mono Way?
I believe they can make that turn, but I'd have to check with truckers for regulation.
No.
Well, and we have different sized trucks, so I want to make that clear as well.
Yeah. So, first of all, I actually believe that the fire truck or the truck deliveries could make it in there, but they could also come in and they definitely could meet the requirements up on Fur to get in there. When the site was originally considered, the developer wanted to have a driveway off of Fur. We told them that that would not work because of the steepness of the road, brought it around. Definitely, the truck will depart going up Old Fur and then coming back down.
It has to come out that way.
Yeah.
I was just making sure that it, because it looks awful tight. So, I'm just asking the question. While she had the question on delivery, I'll back off again. Anyone else have a question?
I didn't understand the answer.[754.12][754.12](laughter)
That was my question.
I think I heard he thinks he can get in off of Fur and have access. It just looks to me like a longer wheelbase truck would have a hard time doing that, but I don't have anything mathematical to point to that.
Could you kind of point out the route that a delivery truck would propose to come in? Just to, just draw, march your way through the map here for me so I, because I'm not quite one with this yet. So, if you're a truck and you're coming in there, how do you get there?
The truck will make this turn.
Right.
Right? It will deliver.
Right.
And then it will come out Fur Drive.
Okay. Would not come back out onto Mono Way?
It can't.
Can't make the turn. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? I didn't mean to interrupt on that. I was just trying to keep the flow of that question going.
That was my question.
Okay.
We're talking about questions for the...
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Back to any general questions from the commission.
I had a question. How long has this been zoned C1?
That's a great question.
And I expect a great answer.[833.12][833.12](laughter)
My lifetime, probably. I mean...
Well, I mean, so it's been, it's been zoned Z1 for 30 years, C1 for 30 years. Is that a number?
I mean, I'm not...
You're not over 28, I'm sure.
Oh, you, Mike, you and me.[848.12][848.12](laughter) No, it has, there has been zoned C1 to our recollection for our involvement at the county. Yeah, 1996 general plan likely.
It would have been when Millards was there.
Millards was there, yeah. Nurseries, you know, the uses that have been on the projects, say, are all, the uses, the Millards are all permitted uses in the C1 district. So, there hasn't been a change since Millards left the site.
That's fine. I have another, can I go?
Sure. Go for it, Mike.
There was some conversation about Caltrans and lack of safe access. Duke, can you explain what that's about or if that exists or what are they talking about?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what the, they made a comment that Caltrans made that determination. Could you go to the zoning exhibit, Renee? And I'm going to take a moment to step to the...
Please.
Prior to the construction of the eastern or bypass, when it was, this was Highway 108 at the time, and Fur Drive was the only road that existed and the new Fur did not exist, there was commercial here and commercial here. And I can tell you in 1968, when I arrived, there was commercial in those two locations. This road was the primary access for the Millard's site and they had a driveway that came in here and a parking lot here. When the new bypass came and they had an off-ramp here, the proximity of the old Fur to the new ramp was too close and this could no longer be used. So, they said, "Well, we don't want to change our site to reconfigure it based on this being eliminated." That was the issue that drove why Caltrans purchased it. And right here were commercial offices. That was Bob Cowden's real estate office right there. And that was, I believe, the issue of what caused the change and why Millards was going out of business. They were also being severely impacted by some of the larger box stores that came in with nurseries.
Okay. Thank you.
Based on the owner.
It came in much later.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead, Jer.
Obviously, the, I think the most pertinent discussion here is really one of safety. And there's a lot of discussion that I think would probably translate into kind of vertical curves and things on Fur Road when you're coming through there. And I'd like to just get some comment, Duke, because you're on the hot seat on this one. So, the, as to why, obviously, this got recommendations to this point. So, you obviously have thought through this. So, what are your thoughts in terms of the mitigating factors around why this is a safe solution?
Well, there's no question in my mind that the right in, right out is the only way to go off of Mono Way. And the access in the back, again, I'll go to the map for my...
You want to put up the site plan?
The, no, this one.
Oh, okay.
The access into the back, which comes up new Fur, this is Mountain View, and then Fur comes up here and goes up that way. And then this portion or the remainder portion of the old Fur Drive, which is not a county-maintained road, then in effect becomes the commercial driveway. I believe this is the best solution for accessing this site. And right here, I would point out that MU is mixed use. That's commercial as well. And this is commercial. And...
Currently undeveloped, though, right?
Yes, currently undeveloped. There used to be apartments here, and I know that because I designed them many, many, many years ago. They're now torn down, but that is the nature of that site. And this is...
Quincy, did you have?
I was just going to add that I think that there is a structure of some sorts, still, yeah, a residence of some sorts in some state.
But it's fairly minimal developed, then I'll change to...
Yes, but it is vacant, is primarily vacant land, zoned, mixed use.
Which could develop into...
It's a combination for residential and commercial uses.
Got it. Thank you. Anyone else have another question?
So, then they're developing the old Fur Road into an access point. They're making their own driveway, essentially. Is that what you just said? They're redeveloping that road to turn into their own.
They, their plan is to make...
We turn this into a truck turn?
Oh. Shows the... You might, if you call, they have a diagram showing the truck turning.
Showing that it can make the turn.
The templates.
Okay.
They do the templates on the thing if it's, but he's got it on that little phone.
It's hard to see.
Well, I'm not going to ask you to show it, but I'm, to the point being, you have done the look to see that it...
Yes, we produced a truck turning template and you can make a right turn off of, or onto Mono Way.
With the type of truck that's going to be used.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Now, I got to go back to the question that...
Yeah, Cole.
Cole Stern.
They're developing the old Fur Road for their access.
Okay, the old Fur Drive is packed full of utilities. It is no longer a public road easement, definitely not county-maintained, but it does provide access not only to this property, but the remnant properties on the other side of that road. So, it is, would be utilized as a commercial, amounts to a commercial driveway to serve properties both east and west of its current alignment.
Okay.
I'm just waiting until everybody else is done, but does anybody else have a question? One concern I heard, I'm sorry if I don't remember who the one was, was site distance coming off of Mountain View and being able to see safely cars traveling on Fur Drive. That's not something I anticipated. Even when I drove out there to look at this, I didn't go up that particular spot. Have you looked at that as well? I mean, does it meet the typical site distance triangle needs? Because we're going to put more cars there. I am concerned if people can't see.
Whether it meets...
Please, please, come on, guys. We need to allow the process.
Whether it meets the site criteria based on local road intersections, I don't know. The alignments were fixed from the original road design from the subdivision. Because the road's a lot wider, I would have to check it to see if it meets current site. One of the things that I can tell you, though, is that when the Mono Way was widened by the city of Sonora, they cut off Mountain View Drive. It used to be a through road and now it is a dead-end road, terminates over by Pennell's Carpets.
Right, that no longer goes through.
And no longer goes through. But there are, there are, I can check the site distance on it, like you said.
I'm just, you know, it just sounded like a legitimate concern. I was trying to understand it, so...
I would say that the site distance there has not changed.
Okay. Any other questions?
I would like, in your presentation, when you looked at the, it's not in our presentation, I don't think, the decision process we're making around site development plans, you had a slide on that. Could you bring that slide back up again for us? Because I think that's really what it comes down to, is we look at this and say, under what circumstances should we approve or not approve this based on those conditions? There we go. Thank you.
So, just as a follow-up to clarify maybe for the audience, if I can, is that this is a, this is property zoned C1, general commercial, and the proposed use, along with about 26 other land uses, are permitted uses within the C1 zoning. However, other locations in our code, if we have this type of development, construction in a C1 zoning district, an additional permit is required called a site development permit. And the purpose of the site development permit is in the name, site development permit. The purpose of the site development permit is not to judge the use of the site, it's to judge the development of the site. And that is per the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code.
One question. Is it to judge the suitability of the development from a practical standpoint of can it be built? Or is it to judge the site of whether it makes sense at that location or both?
I would say that it's, the purpose of the site development permit is not to decide whether or not, let's pick a different business, a gas station, should or should not be allowed at this location. The purpose of the site development permit is to see if the gas station can be developed either with conditions or with mitigations or things like that, so that any of the environmental impacts are reduced to a less than significant level. So, we're not looking at whether or not a use is appropriate. We're looking at if the development of that use can be done in a manner according to the findings in the site development permit.
And that's still to be done?
That, what was the question?
Would be the next step.
That is your, that is the job tonight, is to determine if, looking at factors such as those that are on the board, if this, if the proposed project is developed in a manner, looking at these types of things, that it's appropriate based on the findings that need to be made for the project.
All right. I have one additional question. Was brought up by one of the people that McDonald's employees park on Mono Way. I've seen that, I think we all do as you drive by. And the question was, where would the Wendy's employees park? Is that, is that something that we know the answer to?
Yes. The, we have an ordinance code for the requirement to provide off-street parking for developments based on the square footage of this restaurant and the way that it has fixed seating. We determined that they need to have 28 parking places on-site for just their inside dining. I did contact the applicant and said, "You need to add an additional six parking places if you're going to keep your outdoor dining as well with the additional tables." They stated that they don't think they can fit six more on-site, so they're going to eliminate their outdoor patio so that they can meet the minimum of 28 parking places for their indoor dining and building use.
But the question is, where do the employees park?
That parking ratio is adjusted for, is adjusted for the use of the building.
So, it would include them?
Yes.
Okay. So, I was just trying to get to whether, whether that calculation assumes both...
When we base it on square footage or fixed seating, yes.
So, it's both...
It's based on industry standard.
Both customers and staff.
Correct. Use of the building.
All right. Just trying to clarify that one.
Can I make a comment on that?
Please.
If, obviously, the employees would prefer to park as close as they possibly can to work. So, the reason people wouldn't park there would be if there was a policy that said, "Our customers need these parking spaces. Please find someplace else to park," right?
Exactly.
And so, I think that, one of the, I don't know if it can end up in a condition here or whatever, but we would not be able to, we shouldn't allow a policy like that to be placed if we have the ability to set such, I mean, I don't know where our limitations come in terms of our abilities to set conditions, but one cannot, we do our math based on the fact that we assume the employees are going to be parking there, all right? But then if we have a policy that makes it so the employees can't park there, the math is no longer works, right? So, somehow or another, we got to square that circle.
Would it be appropriate to ask the owner or the proposed builder?
That gentleman want to come back?
Come on back up.
He's going to get his exercise tonight.
So, the question, my esteemed colleague is asking, do you have in any of your other restaurants a policy that the employees cannot park in the parking lot?
No, they all park on our parking lot. They do want to be close to the building. They do have cars. They, you know, they don't want to park down the block or off-site, so they will be parking on the lot, yes.
Okay. You have a question, Duke?
No, I was just going to elaborate. If parking did become a problem later on, we have the ability through the ordinance code to adopt a no-parking zone if need be on that frontage area. Typically, because you have a driveway coming out, you would want the thresholds of that driveway, no parking anyhow. So, usually, right where the driveway would come in or out, you would want to restrict it in any case. So, usually about 25, 30 feet back from both, from the opening.
And you're talking on Old Fur?
Yeah.
Because I know you're not going to allow anybody on Mono Way, so, all right. Any further questions for staff or any of the presenters? Seeing none. Anybody want to start? The chair will go last.
Well, I think that in terms of maybe getting some discussion going that might lead us to a motion or not, there's a couple of points here. One is that this is, this is commercial property. It's been commercial property for a long time. And while we may or may not like what that commercial property is used for, it's outside of our, in my opinion, it is outside of our authority to look at a piece of property and say, "You can use it for this, but you can't use it for that." That's just not the way the codes work. And so, it is, we can say... And so it is, we can say, you know, we can adjust things based on traffic issues, but we cannot discriminate for a particular kind of business. And so all of the discussions about, I don't want a, a fast-food place in my front yard, well, I agree, I probably wouldn't want one in my front yard either, but if you buy a piece of property that's across the street from a commercial property, that is, in fact, what you bought. And so it's unfortunate, but I do not think that, that portion of it, to me, is part of the decision-making process, for me. The traffic issue is one that I would like to see us bang around a little bit more. I, I haven't been convinced that we don't have a, a traffic issue there that maybe isn't, you know, I wanna make sure that we've, that amongst us, we agree that, that we're not adding risk. That's obviously a very busy intersection, probably the most complicated intersection in the county.
Arguably.
And so I, I think that banging that around a little bit more would be something I'd be interested in having more discussion about. The commercial use portion of it, I think that's, that's something that's, it's an entitlement.
One question, I, there was someone also mentioned the puddle at the bottom, which I've also noticed. What would happen as a result of this project? Would that somehow be dealt with? Hopefully it goes away?
Well, there would be improvements on Fur Drive to channelize that into existing drainage structures in a better way, but the issue of the puddle on Mono Way, that was something we inherited from Caltrans. They, they built that the way they did. And unfortunately, that situation is due to the fact the AC, when, instead of putting the proper cross slope into it, it flattened in that location, and.
That's the asphalt, for those that aren't.
We, it got relinquished to us. So in terms of fixing the drainage on Mono Way, I'll differentiate between that and the site itself. All of the counters, the sensors for the signal would have to be redone in order to resurface that and get the 2% cross slope in it. What we did and have conditioned as part of this project is that all the on-site water will be put into a retention, detention basin underneath the parking lot and metered from the site, so that there would be no increased runoff from this site. They will manage their site, and that's a requirement also of the State Regional Water Quality Control Board. The water that comes down Fur, there is a down drain there, but there is a need for a, I'll call it a window on the back of the DI, a drainage inlet, to improve and keep that water from coming out and adding to the problem on Mono Way. That is the part that will be taken care of with the new construction. There will be a sidewalk placed parallel to Mono Way, and it will allow a, what they call a side-windowed drainage inlet, which is a better arrangement for how to deal with drainage. So we're making what improvements we can, but we can't really hit them for a pre-existing situation. I know that somebody expressed concern that I was doing it just so I could get a problem fixed, and I wish that were true, but that's not the case.
So could I summarize by saying it won't solve the entire problem? It should make it a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Anyone else wish to hazard an opinion? Looking at that list, the only one that concerns me is the traffic circulation and parking, and we've talked about parking. The rest of it, I think they've answered the questions. I do wish to point out, there were a couple of people who insinuated that we were the ones that, or that staff were the ones that brought this project forward. That's not the case. This is a private person, entity, business, who has a piece of property zoned for this type of use, as Jerry said. We all have property that we purchased that has rules to it, and it's very difficult for those of us up here who have to make a determination to look at someone who's come in with a project that meets the rules. Now, you may or may not like the way they met the rules, but they met the rules. For us to find something that would be so significant that we would say, even though you met the rules, we're going to tell you, you can't do it. So as staff have pointed out, that's the list of things that we would have to agree all have been met. Personally, just as a driver, never mind my past history, trying to, I go into town probably three or four times a day and come off that off-ramp, and it's difficult. I mean, it's, it's hard. If you're trying to go over toward Safeway Staples, wherever you might be going, to get over to the left-hand turn lane is difficult, and there are a number of interesting maneuvers that go on there all day long, with people trying to do that. I don't think that intersection is particularly usable, as friendly, usable-friendly as it should be. But we did inherit that from Caltrans. That was what they provided. The county didn't, the city didn't. The other thing I think is worth noting, several of the people mentioned McDonald's. You need to understand that McDonald's is inside the city of Sonora, and all of the decisions that were made on this, on the McDonald's project were made by the city of Sonora. County had a little bit of input, but that was really not a county project. I personally am, I'm struggling to try to say that traffic circulation, the way this is proposed, is not a significant issue. I'm, I'm having a hard time. So I don't know about the rest of you, but that's, that's troublesome.
I think it's troublesome for me as well.
I wanna make sure I got the right number of negatives involved there, specifically. You said you, you're having problems, saying that it is not, so you.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm afraid I have issues that make me think it is a problem.
Okay. I had to count the negatives there and see if I got.
Sorry, didn't mean to give you too many. My wife will tell you I do that a lot.
That goes well.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You know, I, I gotta believe if I was in the neighborhood, looking at this and saying, you're gonna put these people through a neighborhood, and you're gonna have them coming down that steep street to come down to this, to Mono Way with kids. I, I mean, I, I know how I'd feel, you know? And so I don't, I don't know that that isn't significant.
For me as well, I, I agree. I think that the traffic portion of this is very concerning. As Peter said, when you navigate that intersection going into Safeway or otherwise, it's, I have a little bit of trepidation, and I think especially when we look at kids, we look at fire, we look at access, all of the factors there, and possibly some unintended consequences that could come with this, I do have some major concerns.
One of the steps that was offered to us was to send it back to staff. Is it feasible to send it back to staff to review the traffic and parking and have them come back just on that one topic only, not the rest? That's all done, but just.
I think that's an excellent question. Duke, in your presentation, you mentioned that it did not meet the threshold for a traffic study, and you pointed out that there were several other traffic studies in the area. I agree there were several other traffic studies in the area, no question. I don't know any of them focused on this particular intersection necessarily. Maybe they did, and I just don't know that. Would, would the fact that it's almost 500 get us close enough to maybe wanna take a look at that?
When you look at a traffic study, there are different levels of traffic study. And I'll just cite an example because it's up the hill. We had come to the conclusion on a particular project up the hill once, many years ago, that no traffic study was warranted. Caltrans looked at it and determined that they wanted a focused study just on the circulation plan in and out of the site. You know, what, what the vehicles can do and not do. So we did what we called the lowest-level traffic study. It's Level 1, if I remember my numbers correctly. And it only looked at a particular aspect. We didn't do, you know, segments and intersections and all the other stuff that goes into a much broader traffic study. We do a Level 1, and it's focused on a particular issue, which is the circulation. So what you can propose is to do that and just look at a Level 1 traffic study, which only looks at the circulation, you know, the trucks are an area of concern. Naturally, you know, fire trucks getting in, getting around would also, could also be incorporated into that. And that would be a very relatively simple process. It's not as complicated. And I, I wanna confirm, just because my fee schedule just happens to be right here, it is the minimal review, it's called Level 1.
Okay. Would that level of traffic study also include looking at the intersection of Mountain View? And how that intersection functions today?
All, all of those intersections were studied as part of a traffic study. I left one out. When they did the Mono Way widening, Jerry Ficello did it based on the current configuration, which the additional widening of Mono Lane. So there have been intersection studies.
I, I think where I'm going with this is, I think a lot of us would be a lot more comfortable if we were talking about the original alignment of Fur, because that had a different, it's a different grade, it's different, you know, site distance, it's easier access. Unfortunately, that's not an option. I agree to some degree that the steepness of Fur is a problem. I mean, if you're coming down that thing in the snow, I imagine it's not easy to stop. And you got an awful lot of people at the bottom of it. I, I just, I'm having a hard time.
Let me put forward a concept. The traffic circulation issue can be very easily studied, as I say, that's looking at templates and different things. One of the things that we could also ask, and it would still keep it in the Level 1 threshold, is we have an ability to look at the traffic accident history, because we map that through GIS. So the nature of the accidents, whether there are people sliding out into it, you know, during adverse weather, or the nature of any of the accidents in that area, where they are and what they are, we can do, because we have that all mapped through GIS, that would be very easy to incorporate in the scope of that study as well.
I don't know what other commissioners think of that idea. I'm just trying not to dominate.
Well, I, I would like to make a motion this be sent back to staff for a Level 1 traffic study, including accidents. But I wanna limit it just to the traffic circulation and parking. I don't wanna go back through everything else we've done that we've already reviewed.
Well, ultimately, that would have to be a motion here. Is that, is that your motion?
I thought I just did.
Is that, is that, I'm just trying to follow you, Mike. Is that your intent, is it a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I did second.
We've got a second, okay, for discussion. Does anybody have an opinion on that?
I, I'd like to know whether there are fees involved with the developer.
Yes, there are.
Yes, give me an idea, please.
And just while Duke is looking for that, I just would like to make sure that the commission understands that if it's sent back to staff and then brought back forward to the commission, that when you open the public comment, the public is not limited to only commenting on the traffic issue. We'll be bringing the whole project back before you. And not only can the comments that you've heard tonight be raised, but it, anyone can raise any issue that they choose at that time. So I just wanna make sure that the commission is aware of that, that while your intention may be focused only on a certain issue, we can't limit the public to what the discussion topic is.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, the traffic study, the Level 1 traffic study is $896. That's our county cost and does not include any cost that would need to be borne by the applicant for hiring a traffic consultant to complete that task.
Thanks, Quincy.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I think the overarching concept here for this is that while the property values that we've discussed for all the residential properties around there are a significant concern for those, it's also true for this commercial property. And one of the things that we do, if we say, hey, the traffic's too tough here, you can't use this piece of property, we've effectively condemned that piece of property, and now the value of that piece of property is on to zero. So we have to, you know, we, we have to have something tangible to be able to tie that to. And I think the idea of doing a traffic study around that, but I wanna make sure that we're not just fitting it into some cookie cutter of a traffic study. It has to be to solve the particular problem that we're talking about here, which is the safety of getting in and out of this facility.
And may I just add, if, if there's any clarification, you don't need to provide any, if there's not any, but any, there are certain aspects of the project that cannot be changed, such as the, the slope of Fur Drive, things like that. And so if there's, you know, if there's any comments or direction you can provide staff regarding just, you know, even if we come back and say, there's no safety issues, you know, there still are gonna be issues that were raised by the public tonight that we can't change. So if there's any other direction or thoughts or none, that's fine, too. Just about how we wanna be incorporating that into our additional actions, that would be helpful for me.
Okay. Anybody?
I have an opinion.
Does that surprise you? You have an opinion?
The, I mean, I understand that we live in the mountains, and therefore, if we were to condition every, every situation that you, you can't have a problem because you live in the mountain, we're not gonna prove anything. So therefore, I understand that, and I, I accept that there's, there's no way we're going to take this to zero risk, right? And so that's the, no, we're not gonna be able to flatten out Fur Drive, we can't make the mountain go away. And so, you know, look at it, say, is, is this, is the risk on this thing undo as a result of all of that? You know, that's just a separate, I don't know if that helps, but.
That's pretty consistent with my thinking.
I agree.
Any further discussion before we vote on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Recognizing that what Quincy said is true, this virtually assures we'll be back here talking about the whole project again, and that's something that you folks in the audience should know. You will have the opportunity to come back, and you will have the opportunity to state your concerns regardless of what the traffic study says. So I would like to thank all of you for your time. This isn't the outcome I'm sure the applicant wants, but I, I believe it's a serious enough issue to all of us that we'd like more information in that regard, so. With that, I believe we're adjourned.